Hello, Amrita. Good afternoon all. So now today the first session of the day and we are starting with the three eminent personalities of internet governance. So today we have Rajneesh Singh, Regional Vice President for the Asia-Pacific Internet Society. We have Samiran Gupta with us who is heading India Office of ICANN. We have Joyce Chen with us who is Senior Advisor Strategic Engagement APNIC. So I on behalf of INSEC 2021, I welcome you all three. So and and for one line fellow have unlimited enthusiasm today, but we have limited time. So and I request all the fellows keep asking question. It will give us motivation and speaker a thought like we have delivered something and somebody is asking some question, right? It gives you like you are curious. So floor is yours. Do we have Rajneesh with us?
Yes.
Yes, Rajneesh, you can start.
All right. What do you want me to start with?
Do you have slides?
Nope.
Okay, so like what do you think what is happening in IG space when we talk about Asia-Pacific?
Okay, so let's probably take a step back in terms of you know what internet governance is. So if you cast perhaps most of you were probably not around over kids back then or at least some not all of you. In the early stages of the internet governance and how it came about, talking about the early 2000s here. Much of the narratives, much of the discussions were around critical internet resources. Very specifically domain names and IP addresses. And there were a lot of things happening in the world, obviously, which were affecting. Oh, you know, people were interested in bits and pieces. And there was a lot of tension between many of the multilateral organizations, some of our technical community organizations and so on. So in the midst of all that, you know, there was these global meetings held, which then basically gave birth to what we call the Internet Governance Forum now. So the first one is in 2006 and I'm sure you've all probably aware of the history. So I won't go through all that. But what I wanted to say was that in these last 15 years or so, the internet governance space itself has evolved. So if you look at the early days, you know, it was largely the policy wrongs. It was largely the technical community, some government people and some big business. But if you look at each of these, particularly these national IGFs and the regional IGFs these days, even the global IGF. You have a much broader spectrum of people who are involved. And what that really does highlight, of course, is that the internet governance or the internet itself is so. It permeates every part of our lives now, right? It's so integral to how we function as a society. And I think that also represents why there's this larger spread of people involved in the internet governance space. So you know, going from the days of when it was just a technical and or technical policy for. I think what you have now is this people, for example, from media, people who study commerce, people who are in other branches of science and engineering. You know, there's this huge medley of people who turn up. And and the reason for that, of course, is, you know, irrespective of what our backgrounds are or what we're involved in. The fact remains that the internet does affect us as well. We should all then play a role in how the the future of the internet shapes up. So it's great to see it and every time I come to events like this one, you are very nicely organizing here currently. It is great to see this diversity of people that that turn up. And I think that really is one of the hallmarks, I think, of internet governance today is the diversity itself. One other thing I want to add is that, you know, along with the diversity, diversity also means there will be different points of view. And I think being able to recognize that. You may or may not agree with a particular point of view, but I think it's very important to be able to process and pass what people are saying. So that you also understand where they're coming from, right? It's not just, you know, if you are tunnel visioned in your approach, it doesn't work too well. And that of course leads itself to what we call the multi-stakeholder model, where you know, we have these various stakeholders of different backgrounds. Different expertise and so on, getting together to try and solve this problem at hand. The internet itself, I think, one of the reasons it has thrived apart from being a very, apart from its open nature. Apart from its interoperability is the fact that, you know, we allow these diverse voices to take. To take shape, take whole, to express what they want to express. It's also very bottom up, right? I mean, there really is no hierarchy. You know, everyone claims to be an expert, but very few people actually are. So you know, one thing I often say is that just because someone claims to be an expert, doesn't mean they are an expert, right? You probably know more about some things than they do. So you know, be very prepared to engage with those people irrespective of, you know, what the position is, what the age is, where they're from. It doesn't really matter because the future of the internet is not with us older folks. It's with you, the next generation, who will lead us into that future. So let me stop there. I think perhaps my other colleagues on the panel will have some greater wisdom to impart and then maybe we can get into a discussion later on. Thanks very much and good to see you. It's been a while since we met.
Actually, they have slides to show. So like I'll be taking more time of you. So like we have seen, like youth is using internet and 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 like net is used by school children also. I mean, you know, my son had started using internet when he was five years, right? Five years old. So do you think, I mean, IG as a curriculum should be added into schools and colleges as well? Like we have seen, people are joining us like they are, I think, 20, 25 years old. But like in my opinion, it should be taught from the you start using internet. What do you think about?
You're absolutely right, Jay, because I don't know, this has been one of my pet peeves for a very, very long time now. You know, it 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 saddens me that in many economies around the region and elsewhere in the world. We have, the fact is that our education syllabus, our education curriculum does not necessarily prioritize digital technologies. Now, yes, you may have, you know, some, some countries, some economies, some schooling systems have some computer science sort of coding technology sort of things. But you know, it, the approach is so archaic, for the lack of a better term, that you know, it's. It's looking at the past to try and figure out where we should go in the future, right? I mean, as an example, about a year, just before COVID, someone sent me a syllabus for computing course at at the school, at a junior secondary school, right? So this is year eight, nine around that. And when I looked at what was presented in that syllabus, you know, they were teaching about, you know, what, what's a CPU, what's a video? I mean, you know, it was such basic stuff. And 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 my first comment was, I said, you know, the kids were teaching these two, they probably don't even know, they will not even use a computer. They're using a tablet or some other kind of mobile device, right? So you really have to be in tune with what today's environment is. And that's why, just going back to your actual question, Jay, I do believe that, you know, teaching kids. You know, be it coding skills, be it, you know, how you can apply technology, digital technologies. It, it's, it's not a matter of when you start, if you haven't started, you know, I would say, go to the kindergarten stage, right? Kids should be made aware of digital technologies because even if we don't give it to them then, their parents are probably giving it to them anywhere, right? To keep them busy or keep them occupied or the kid wants to be online, I mean, like for example, you gave Jay with your son, right? So I really think that, you know, digital skills has to be embedded right from day one, you know? At the very least, I would say year one. And going about daily school life for kids, you know, technology or digital technology should be integrated into it itself, right? So you know, if you're learning maths or science or literacy or or numeracy or whatever it may be, using the digital tools. Right then, then will help shape their future, right? Because once kids grow up with that in a schooling environment as well, I think that brings up a whole bunch of new opportunities that can be leveraged later on. Because for them, it will be like second nature, right? And I went to school when we're using chalkboards and blackboards, right? So it's a far cry from what we're things are today. So I really think it should be prioritized at that very primary level.
Thank you for your great insights. Now, Samiran, you can join us with your slides and we would like to hear from you as well. And and I I will request all the fellows, it is very important slides you want to see. And you have to ask question, just raise your hands, I'll allow you to speak. Okay? Thank you. Samiran.
Thank you, Jay. And Raj, good to see you as well. It's been a while. So so today what I'm going to do is I'm going to, this is a very quick presentation. Because we can keep talking about ICANN till the cows come home, but I'm good. I've just actually split this into three segments, a very quick introduction to ICANN and then. One moment. Yeah. And then, well, you see Joyce in the photo there in the middle, a little. You know, conversation about ICANN in the APAC region and then what we are doing in India. So quick introduction to ICANN. So what does ICANN do? We actually coordinate the unique identifiers of the internet, so which includes the protocol parameters, names and numbers. So essentially, the IP addresses and the domain names are kind of unique to each other. And that coordination is what ICANN facilitates. So a lot of what we do is broadly in two pillars. One is technical services and the second is policymaking. And I'm going to share these slides with you later so you can take a look in more detail. But I I'd point you to the three red boxes at the at the bottom right of the screen. So these are the IANA services, IANA function, this is the core of ICANN's activities, which is IP. Addresses, root zone management and protocol parameters and of course, there's a host of other things that we do. But you see a couple of other things on the screen such as policy development and support and growth of community. A lot of that is a very important function of ICANN's activities. Now, the ICANN ecosystem consists of three broad groups. Or the first is the community, which is yourselves. And out of the community comes the Board of Directors and on the left of the screen is the organization. And I, in this context, represent that organization. The community is responsible for making policy, which the board, you know, kind of ratifies. The organization's role is to support the community in their activities. Now, this is the last slide on ICANN because after this it would possibly get very detailed. But just to give you an idea of who makes the policies, there are three groups within ICANN which make policies. The, you know, generic top level domains group, the country code top level domains group and the numbers organizations. And then separately, there are four groups which give advice on the policymaking process. This includes, you know, governments and international treaty organizations, root server operators and internet security experts. And of course, internet end users. So let's talk very briefly about ICANN in the APAC region now. So what is the APAC region? For us, APAC region, it consists of Asia and Oceania, as you can see in this map. For us, Asia starts from 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 India and goes all the way across to Japan. And then, of course, you can see Oceania in the darker blue color below. Now, what's special to to us about this region? Fifty percent of the global internet users reside in this region. Twenty-one of the 30, 30 most spoken languages are in this region. Five out of 10 countries with largest internet users globally. And next billion of internet users from the APAC region and non-English speaking. So these are also some of the challenges and opportunities, you know, getting the non-English speaking internet users online. We have a regional office in Singapore and we have an engagement center in Beijing and partnership centers in Seoul and Delhi. And we have staff apart from being in Singapore, also in China, India, Australia and Thailand. And of course, on the right hand side of the screen, you see all the activities that are represented at the ICANN Regional Office. So what is the purpose of the regional office? So we act as a primary interface between the regional stakeholders and the ICANN headquarters. But most importantly, we use the five-year strategic plan to guide ICANN's work in the region. And we gather regional stakeholder requirements to share with global functions. And there are, you know, internal coordination between LA and the region that also takes place. I'm not going to talk so much about it. Now, the APAC Regional Office strategy is really, there are three broad pillars to it. One is, you know, we operate with APAC stakeholders at the core, develop sustainable stakeholder relationships. Community collaborations and capacity building. And we like to build and strengthen capabilities to provide key services to stakeholders. And lastly, develop operational excellence for the regional office. There are four broad activities that come out of the APAC Regional Office, APAC Space, ICANN Readouts, Capacity Development. And the APIGA or Asia-Pacific Internet Governance Academy. Now, APAC Space is about an engagement by the community and is community-led. This is where the community discusses ICANN policy issues. We meet during the ICANN meeting and also bi-monthly. If you wish to join this group, you just need a mail to this email ID to get added to the mailing list. The APIGA.
Could you please mute yourself? Jay, can you mute the person, please?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Now, the APIGA or the Asia-Pacific Internet Governance Academy is a collaboration with Korea Internet and Security Agency, or better known as KISA. And other regional organizations, APIGA, and this is essentially a week-long internet school of, you know. A school of governments for internet, which is co-hosted by KISA and ICANN and other regional organizations. And of course, there are possibly there are alumni in the room today and in the region. In terms of capacity development workshops and partnerships, there's, there's a bunch of activities that we've done. And there's some pictures of those, but one of the most significant ones last year, which which actually got initiated two years ago was the. IMR's root cluster in Singapore. And of course, we, another one quite significant was the partnership with NASCOM in India and IMDA in Singapore. So the more of these activities that happen regionally. Now I come to the last segment of my presentations, ICANN in India milestones and current achievements. So what was it activities, current activities? So ICANN, ICANN's presence in India started when, you know, formal presence in India started when I came on board in 2014. So in 2015, the first IMR's root instance was established in Kolkata, followed by another one in Mumbai. 2016 saw ICANN 57 being held in Hyderabad. Since 2016, we've had ICANN Readouts and in 2018, we signed a MOU with NASCOM Center of Excellence for IoT and AI. And between 2015 and 2020, the New Branding Generation Panel, which had a large number of Indian participants. Worked on the label generation rules. For nine index scripts. And then in 2020, the Universal Acceptance Local Initiative led by FICKI ILA got started with their work. And this year in 2021, we've had ITHI and DAR deployment projects which are ongoing. Current activities include the DNS competition that we're running with NASCOM. The link is there, you can go and see what's going on. The Universal Acceptance Local Initiative and of course, I'm participating in the Government of India's Universal Acceptance Committee. Apart from that, we have an ITHI project ongoing with iPhone and then training programs that we're doing with the CDAC. I'd like to also thank the community members in the region and in India for supporting all these initiatives that we are undertaking in India. And I come to the end of my presentation. If you wish to get involved with ICANN. There are several ways to do this. You can attend a meeting, go online, take a course, sign up for news alerts. Or find and participate in an ICANN community group by visiting icann.org/community. Please feel free to reach out to me if you wish to discuss your participation further. ICANN is also available on these social media websites. That's all I have, Jay. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Samiran. It's always, you know, new to learn from your slides every time. So now I would like to call Joyce with the slides. Joyce, please come in.
Thanks very much, Jay. Just give me a second while I share my slides.
And after the session ends, we would have a Q and A session for 10 minutes at least, right? So fellows, get ready with your questions.
All right. So hello, everyone. I'm Joyce and I'm speaking to you from Singapore. It's very good for me to be here. Thank you for inviting me to talk a bit about APNIC and APRGF. Now I have a question for all of you participants and fellows. Who has heard of APNIC? Just a simple yes or no in the chat would help me get an idea. Don't be shy. Pavel, yes, of course, you were an APNIC fellow before. Oh, quite a number of you have heard of APNIC. So perhaps I can invite you to speak on it. No, I'm just kidding. I won't, I won't stress you out this way. So I've been asked to talk about APNIC and as well APRGF. So I might take a little bit more time than the 10 minutes that we were asked to speak for. I hope you don't mind. So just a bit about APNIC, we are a not-for-profit organization and we have a very important mission. And that is to ensure a global, open, stable and secure internet for the entire Asia-Pacific community. This is just a quick snapshot of just, you know, very high level, what APNIC is all about. It's very text, you know, it's a lot of text on this slide, but subsequently it's all going to be just more pictures. So don't worry. So APNIC is a regional internet registry, an RIR. For those of you who haven't heard of the term before or who are not that familiar with APNIC. And we are an RIR that is serving the Asia-Pacific region. Now, we are one of five RIRs around the world and the other RIRs obviously would serve the other regions. So we are the ones that are for Asia-Pacific. We are member-based, so we have over 8,500 APNIC members and as I've mentioned before, we are not-for-profit. Um, so who are APNIC members? Anyone or any organization who needs to get an IP address, internet protocol address or AS number, autonomous system number. For your network infrastructure can be an APNIC member. All right. So what we do is we manage and we delegate the internet number resources. As I've mentioned, your IP addresses, your IPv4 and IPv6 as well as your AS numbers. And basically, these internet number resources enable devices to connect. Now, my colleague Sunny is in the room and he has a session with you later on where he's going to talk about the core internet technology. So don't worry too much if you don't really understand, it's a bit technical, all these terms. Later on, he will go into a lot more detail about how the network works, how the internet works. So as you can see, just based on the type of work that we do, we are part of the global internet infrastructure. So think of us as the backbone that enables the internet to continue running. And because of that, APNIC is very involved in internet development work. We engage in multi-stakeholder policymaking and we are also active in internet governance. So providing capacity building and development for the region is one of the core activities for APNIC. But before I get into a lot of detail. Here is, just moving the slide on. Here is a look at how IPv6 deployment looks in India. So I've done a comparison chart. You see the red line, it is India and then the blue line is Asia-Pacific. And you can see that in India, it's 75.4% capable. So that's very high. And if you look at the general trajectory over the years. So I believe this is a snapshot from 2012 all the way into 2021. So it's roughly a 10-year time span. There's been a huge spike from, you know, the 2016, 2017 onwards and then it's just been going all the way up since then. If you look at the growth of IPv6 usage in general, likewise, we see this general trend. So these are all the IPv6 users. And if you see, it's like starting at the beginning in 2012 around there, the the number was around 0.3%. And then what we see now is 28% at the end of 2020. So we're looking at a growth factor of 100 over the period, which is very, very large for any basic network infrastructure metric. It's also evident that IPv6 uptake is not over. You will continue to see that it continues to rise. And the reason that I wanted to show this is that a large part of the reason for IPv6 deployment to rise so much in the Asia-Pacific region. It's because of India. So in India, Reliance Jio had, you know, they had this huge IPv6 drive. Made their system completely IPv6 connected and everything. And this had a very big impact. On IPv6 usage just in the region itself. So a huge boost in the number is actually due to India. Now, just going back to talking about internet development and the kind of work that APNIC does. We provide a lot of training and technical assistance. So as a not-for-profit, we have this global mission, right? And so we put a lot of emphasis in these two areas. During the pandemic, of course, capacity building, it's, it's very hard for us to do face-to-face training, which is what was traditionally being done. So we had to move a lot of the training and technical assistance online. So as you can see, we participate and we sponsor a lot of network operator group events. So for example, IANNOC in India is one that we are actively supporting. We also participate and sponsor a lot of security community events and we provide training on a whole number of topics. So if you see on the right, I've put down a few of those topics. And of course, we provide technical assistance to anybody who wants to know about internet operations, network operations, XP operations, IPv6 deployment, etc. I wanted to share this specifically with you because sometimes it's not. because sometimes it's not easy to know where to find help when you want to learn about a specific internet-related topic. So APNIC has an APNIC Academy. It is an online learning platform where basically you can log in, you register, log in, and you can attend all these courses and webinars for free. So you don't have to pay anything. This is a service that is provided free from APNIC. And they are on a whole different number of technical topics. So I've put some of them here. So on the left side, you see these are the online courses. In the center, they are the live webinars that are recorded. And then you can go back and watch different speakers from the community coming to share about topics. And of course, if you require technical assistance, you can also engage one of the APNIC staff or subject matter experts to talk to you about them. So do make use of the APNIC Academy. We have it in multiple languages. The latest language that we included was, if I'm not wrong, Bengali. So that's something I think to look forward to. Hopefully, there will be more languages supported. For APNIC, we run two annual conferences a year. The first conference of the year is back-to-back with, or rather in conjunction with the Apricot Conference. And so Apricot is this annual conference for the network operators to meet together to talk about internet technologies and so on and so forth. The second conference of the year for APNIC is a standalone, just APNIC running the conference. So I've listed two examples here. One was the twenty twenty-one Apricot Conference together with APNIC fifty-one, just some statistics of the attendees. And then our very recent conference was APNIC fifty-two, that was in September. We had good attendance, but it had to be an online event. Usually, the APNIC conferences are face-to-face meetings. You can actually travel and attend this conference. But unfortunately, because of the pandemic, we've had to move everything online. So what we've done is to sort of boost the conference by having a social chat function during the forum, as well as trying out automated transcript. Now, the unique thing about APNIC fifty-two was that it was the first time we launched an online fellowship program, which I'm going to talk about a bit more in this slide. So typically, an APNIC fellowship program would run together with the APNIC conference that it's attached to. But last year, we realized, since, you know, there is no travel required and, you know, what a fellow is going to do. So instead, what we decided to have was a six-month-long online fellowship program, which then concluded with APNIC fifty-two. So our fellows graduated at APNIC fifty-two. We did lots of presentations. And if you look at the number of fellows tied with the mentors, you can see it's almost like a one to two ratio. So for every two fellows, there is like one mentor. So it's a very closely integrated mentorship program as well. So I've included the link, if you can see, it's just below me. Sorry, above me. And I think the slides will be shared with you. So you can always click in to find out more about the fellowship program. Now, I want to talk a bit about APRIGF. That was also tasked to me. So I am a member of the Multi-Stakeholder Advisory Group, the MAG of the Global IGF. And I am also a member of the Multi-Stakeholder Steering Group, the MSG of the APRIGF. So the APRIGF is the regional IGF for the Asia-Pacific. And here, I've just put a couple of, you know, photos, snapshots of the sorts of things that have been done at the APRIGF and the people. And I wanted to show you especially that the APRIGF has been hosted in South Asia before. So back in twenty fourteen, it was in Delhi. And the most recent APRIGF that happened this year was a hybrid event. So what happened was it was hosted, it was online, but it was hosted as well locally in Nepal, in Kathmandu. So we had this hybrid format that worked really, really well in terms of getting participation both from around the region. You know, people were tuning in remotely. But then at the same time, we had folks from Nepal tuning into the session as well. So what the APRIGF does is it is a platform for people to gather, talk about internet governance, discuss issues related to internet governance. It's also a platform for you to exchange and collaborate on any activities. And at the same time, what it does is there are local IGFs. So if I'm not wrong, there's going to be an India IGF. And these national IGFs will also participate in the regional one. And then from the regional one, also participate in the global IGF. So as you can see, the IGF itself has global level, regional, and then all the national IGFs as well. So what the APRIGF is trying to do is advance internet governance development in the Asia-Pacific region. Now, just looking at the APRIGF this year, as you know, it's an annual event. So this year's theme was on towards and includes the sustainable and trusted internet. We had three tracks, inclusion, sustainability and trust. And what we do is every year, we will open a call for community to submit proposals. So all of you here, once you become an alumni of INSEC, you can submit your proposals to the APRIGF next year as well. And even if you are not that very familiar with internet governance, the APRIGF is a very, very good venue for you to learn about internet governance. So what we do is we have this day zero capacity building for newcomers. We also have a youth IGF component that is tied with the APRIGF. And as well, there is an APRIGF fellowship. So this fellowship program is a very robust one that sort of teaches you about internet governance issues. And you have mentors as well to guide you through internet governance.
We have a bit of time, so like in one minute, you
So APNIC has been a very strong supporter of the APRIGF. And these are my colleagues and myself, we were part of it this year as well. Just wanted to show you some of the sessions that we had done. And finally, I just wanted to say that the APRIGF doesn't just stop at the annual event. There is also a synthesis document that captures all the outcomes of the discussions for the sessions. And this document then goes to the IGF as sort of a report of all the community work that has been put in for the APRIGF that year. So that's all for me. I hope to see you at APRIGF, at APNIC. There's all these fellowship opportunities, you know, you need to get a hold of them. And if you want to connect with me, this is my email. And thank you so much for giving me time and I'm sorry for extending it beyond what else allocated, but happy to take any questions.
Any questions, fellows, you can unmute yourself and ask. Meanwhile, I have a question from Jyotha. For gaming consoles like Xbox, IPv4 or IPv6, which supports better? Joyce?
Thanks very much for the question. I think it's, how would I say? Whether it supports better, I don't know if you're asking in terms of the latency or the speed in which the connection is being made. IPv6, obviously, as a more modern technology, would be more stable and secure and as well, just tiny, tiny, like a fraction faster, but you wouldn't know it. So as a user, somebody who is gaming on your console, whether it connects to IPv4, IPv6, you practically speaking, you don't feel the difference, right? So the difference is really in terms of just, there are other aspects of IPv6, but they are not necessarily specific to connecting gaming consoles.
So fellows, we have four minutes to finish. If you want to ask any question, please unmute yourself and ask. Samiran is here and Joyce is here. Please ask questions.
So Jay, I have a question. Amrita here. Samir and Joyce, the question is to both of you. You've shared a lot, many opportunities through which, you know, fellows can participate. What would be your top two or three tips for fellows to engage in these processes?
Joyce, you want to go first?
Sure. So in the fellowship process, the best way to engage really is to just ask questions. Don't assume that you know certain pieces of knowledge. There is no such thing as a stupid question. And in the fellowship, that is exactly the time to ask all the questions you can. And then don't stop your journey once you've graduated as a fellow. Like, I know a lot of people go through the fellowship program, but they don't seem to come back after that for the conferences. So what you want to do is use the fellowship as a starting point. You want to build a network for yourself so that when you connect into, whether it's the APNIC community, whether it's the ICANN community, you already have people that you know. You should get to talk to them a bit more, make them your mentors and continue working with this network and then growing. So there are different motivations. Maybe you want to do this because of your career, you're looking for a job in the industry. And this is an excellent way to connect. Maybe this is already part of your work. You know, you work for an organization that is also looking after, you know, bits and aspects of the internet. This is again, an opportunity for you to connect professionally.
Hi, Joyce. Myself, Mohit Mathur. I have a question regarding autonomous systems, right? So may know what is the size of autonomous system and how many routers are there in, we can say, for OSPF, we can say, number of routers in an autonomous system?
Joyce, do you want to take it or do you want Sunny to respond?
I think Sunny might be better placed to respond if you can.
I can cover that in my next presentation. So let's keep that question for the next session.
Thanks, Mohit. And that means also you will be have to stay for the next session as well. Give you a preview.
Samiran, do you want to respond also?
Yes. So if I recall your question correctly, Amrita, you had said what are the top two or three things that fellows should be doing at this session or going forward? Okay. So I think Joyce gave a very good intro into that, which is, you know, to participate and ask as many questions as possible and seek out, you know, members of the various community to, you know, get to know more. Let me just nuance that a little bit and add to it. I would say that, you know, the internet governance space, on the one hand, is about twenty-five, thirty years old. On the other hand, it is very fast evolving in terms of the technologies, you know, which are coming into the space. And therefore, you need to first understand the basics of what the internet is and the basics of where the governance of internet started and how, you know, how it has matured over a period of time. And then, then from there, you can start possibly figuring out which side of the internet that you're interested in. So is it the content side? Is it the technology side? Is it the encryption side within technologies, on and so forth? So if there are two or three things that, you know, you should be focusing on, it is just to get the basics right, I would say. Jay, I'm done.
Thank you, Samiran, Joyce and Raj for wonderful insights and session.